All right, it's one o'clock. Let me see, do we got everyone here? We're gonna go ahead and get our meeting started. We're gonna first ask for prayer. We're gonna ask for Pastor Archibald to give us our evening prayer, and be followed by Councilmember Crum giving us our pledge. For everyone, please stand.
Before we get started, were there any, any prayer requests that needed to be added?
If you could, Ms. Canali.
Councilmember Wheelys.
Those that were affected by the tornado damage.
Cristation Turner, my friend.
Tell me, tell me her first name again.
Cristation.
Excellent. If you would please bow your heads as I lead us in a word of prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you at this time, and we recognize your mighty and awesome ability to guide, to lead, to protect your people in their times of concern, in their times of need, and in their times of prosperity. Lord, I pray that you would be with this entire council and all those that have gathered with their concerns, with their thoughts, their plans, their hopes for the future. Lord, we live in an interesting time. Things are dangerous by many accounts. Things are declining by many accounts. But where we stand and where we are in this place, there is hope and there is light at the end of the tunnel. And we are so grateful for the place in which you have placed us, and the hope that we have as we look forward into the future and all the things that will be brought forth. Or we're grateful for the entire gathering, this entire council that has been pulled together to recognize a better future for this place and all of its inhabitants. Dear Lord, we pray that you would give us peace, that we might be able to come together, to get along, to move things forward in a positive way. Or we pray that you would be with Canali, that you would watch over them, or that you would be with Councilmember Ali, that you would be with Tonia, and that you would be with Cristatio Turner. Or we pray that you would be with each one of those per request in the ways in which they need you most. Or we know that you know what is best and that you will do that. Dear Lord, we pray that as we go further into the proceedings, that you would just guide each thing that is said, each issue that is brought up, and that it might come in fashion alongside with your will, so that what is best for the city might be done in the long run. Dear Lord, we pray that you would just be with this council meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let us face the flag, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask the senior clerk, will she please give the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor McLendon?
Yes, President.
City Attorney Stevenson?
Here.
City Treasurer Suter Jr., Counselor Bruce?
Here.
Counselor Cat?
Here.
Counselor Crum?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Holt?
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Mohammed? Counselor Monday?
Here.
Counselor Murray?
Here.
Counselor Wheelys?
We have ten out of ten present here. I'm sorry, nine out of ten present. Councilman Wheelys is not in. First of all, let before, I'm just gonna debate just a real quick moment from the agenda. You know, I look at all our city employees as my family members, and that true to mean that they are our family members regardless of what department they are working, working at. We had a young lady by the name of Jennifer Canali, who suffered a stroke about a little over three weeks ago, so she was out. And Monday, unfortunately, she passed away. And just out of respect of our family members and all of the people here at the council and our guests as well, we just wanna honor her for a second with a moment of silence if you all don't mind. So, y'all give her a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And we're gonna continue to keep her family in our prayers, and the prayer of all of our city family members. All right, our first order business that we have today is our bid openings. Have you all looked at the bid tabulation sheet?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to refer those back to the administration for disposition.
Thank you, the second.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Now, I'm gonna ask Ward, will he come up and just give just a little information of just the first beginning of our part of the infrastructure plan?
Yes, this is the first step of the ditch maintenance, citywide ditch maintenance, part of that bond that was passed last year. This is the diversion ditch that moves all the water from anywhere in the city over to the pumping station. And it's kinda ironic that we're talking about this today, because the pump station is, Bob's got it going full blast today. This clears the trees out of the ditch. This is the third time we've done this, and really, we shouldn't let it get like this. And we'll, I'm gonna introduce our new city engineer, and I think in the future, he'll, he'll keep this from happening again. I'll be back, he and I will be back in a month or so with another bid. After we clear the trees out, we have to kinda mop the ditch out, remove beaver dams, remove some trees that are in the middle of the ditch that these guys can't reach, and just clean out some grass islands, and then spray the ditches and reseed it with Bermuda grass, what they call hydro seeding. The ditch was designed, we designed ditches to carry the water. It was designed to be big enough to carry the water that was needed to pump over the, over the levee into the river. It was designed to have Bermuda grass growing on the ditch banks. Now, it may sound extravagant, but, you know, Bermuda grass only gets up about that high, and when the ditch is full of water and the water's flowing, that grass just lays right over. And that's what the ditch was designed for. The cross-section was designed to have that grass lay over. It's actually a little slick, and one of the things we look at when we're trying to design a ditch, and how much water it carries, is what the, the friction factor, you know, what the, what the water's gotta flow against on the ditch bank. So when you get trees and vines and brush growing there, you know, it slows the water down. You can imagine, as that water hits those, all that woody growth, it kinda spins. You got all these little whirlpools going down the length of the ditch, and that water's not going forward. And it kinda cuts the cross-sectional, effective cross-sectional area of that ditch down along with the stuff that's growing there. So that's why it's important to have these ditches cleaned and with a nice Bermuda side bank. And once we get it going, you know, all we need in the future is to have it sprayed several times a year and just keep it like that. And, you know, it's the same philosophy that the levee board follows. You look at the levee board, the levee, every time you cross over to Memphis, there's nothing growing on that levee except grass. And, you know, that's to protect the integrity of the levee, and it's the same thing with these ditches. So we need our ditch banks to look like the levee. So this is, I said, the first step. We had a lot of interest in it. I think a lot of the bidders thought this was like utility going down, cutting the tree branches out of power lines. And once they got it and read it, they, they did not submit a bid. I mean, one of these companies was in Florida, one of them was in Indiana, so we, we got the two bids, local bids and SN, which also got the South Loop contract, construction, which was the low bidder. And that works out really well, because otherwise, we're gonna have two different contractors working in the same area at the same time. So this, this will move forward very quickly, and I'll be, well, Pacific and I will be back in front of you, hopefully in not too distant future. And with that, I'd like to introduce, Pacific, come on. This is Pacific Mizel.
Mizel.
You know, I should be able to say that. Anyway, he's worked in Memphis with engineering company, civil engineering company, and we're pleased to have him. He's, he's got a background. And one of the nightmares I've had is getting our municipal stormwater management permit updated, and he's had some background in that, civil engineer. And, you know, we're, we're pleased to have him, and we look forward to working with him, so thank you.
Glad to have you.
Ward?
Yes?
How did y'all let the ditches get away like that?
Well, when, when you have, you know, I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, but the engineering department needs to watch after those ditches and make it a priority, just like this. And, and the city council, and, you know, the mayor gets it. So that's why we have this bond and everything. But, you know, just how you get involved with the street overlay program, you need to be involved with those ditches and ask, why aren't these ditches being maintained? You know?
Because they was keeping them up pretty good for a while.
When Phillip Sorrell was here, he had them running good. And it doesn't take four or five years for them to get out of hand.
No, not no trees.
Now, those trees down there like that, like that water and that ditch bank. So we gotta have professional engineers that can get out, understand the work, and not look at contracting out or doing. We do not need any more studies on our drainage system. We've studied it. It just needs to be maintained.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, this is the diversion ditch for Waverly Road over to the retention park.
Yes. Now, you'll see us back with, we're gonna work our way up, upstream, but as, as Bob would tell ya, if the water's not in the pond, we can't, you know, the pumps doesn't do any good. So we gotta get the water into the pond, and this is, you know, taking the first plug out.
Do we have any idea what century the Corps is gonna finish the project south of us?
Well, it certainly wasn't last century when we fully expected it.
Next century.
So I cannot answer that question. We're not sure about any of the federal programs right now, so.
Well, they, they, they claim it's been a thirty-year plan, so I think next year would be the thirty-year.
I think it's, I've been here a long time. It's always been a plan.
Well, as you know, I think it was Senator Pryor had it as, I wanna think, if it was him, it was back in seventy-five, I think, when it was first looked at. And, you know, when we moved forward with the, the plan that we pursued in eighty-nine and ninety, it was a, they had priced it at twenty-five million dollars, and we were supposed to get all the right away from West Memphis to, to Crazy Point, which, how could we do that? And we ended up doing the project for seven point one million dollars. So I don't know what to expect downstream, but it just, we gotta take care of ourselves here, because nobody else is.
I had saw the projection on the ten and fifteen mile bays that were projected in fiscal years, I think twenty, thirty-five. Didn't know if those projects were actually gonna come to reality, or it was just another promise that's not being kept, so.
Three years ago, I ran into the survey, the Corps of Engineer survey crew down by Waverly. They were cross-sectioning the ditches.
Okay.
That's the last I've seen or heard.
That's a comforting thought.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ward.
All right. Were there any corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve this minute.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Those minutes, minutes are approved, sorry about that. We had no old business. We had no new business. But I think Councilman Monday?
Yeah, we talked about this a minute before you got here, before we did, we wanna have a meeting after this meeting, about five minutes to discuss the bids of fourteen, fifteen,
I'm good with that.
You good with that?
Yes, sir. All right, so me, it bothers me. Thank you, Councilman. I had no permission requests, committee reports. I only had a few, so I'm gonna start with Public Works.
Public Works. Public Works met on April the first, twenty twenty-five. The meeting was called to order at two fifteen, and the minutes were approved from March third. No old business, no new business. Reports, fleet report, front-end Lotus, three operational, zero down. Rear-end Lotus, two operational, zero down. One-on-bandit, three operational, zero down. Grapple truck, three operational, one down. Public Works Director report, recycle total, ten thousand five hundred and forty pounds. Tires, five hundred. Garbage trash dump, fifteen hundred. And fifteen hundred at fifty-six point seven tons, monthly cost fifty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. We had six carts purchased, eight stolen, replaced with police report, fifteen carts replaced and/or fixed with busted lids or broke. We did ask again, Mayor, for city engineer report at our regular commission meeting, and also a code enforcement officer to be present in the report.
All right, I'm gonna move down to Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, sir. The January meeting, I've gotta catch up on a few months here. The December financials for the year end were submitted and approved. The new executive director, Stephanie White, was introduced to the Board of Directors. She has several plans for the upcoming year and is in process of implementing those. The new member of the month was DCA Legacy Builders. They reduced the number of committees from eight to six. There was a small dues increase of fifty dollars annually. Current members' contacts for that month were ninety-seven. Member recruitment contacts were six. New members were six. Total chamber members were three hundred and seventy-nine. Tourism package that were sent out were eighty-one. Member referrals were eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-two. There were two ribbon cuttings. The social media presence, six thousand one hundred and three individuals reached over two platforms. And the weekly newsletter is four hundred and eighty-five subscribers. Staff coordinated all membership services, financial reporting, and event scheduling in December. Staff coordinated marketing and communication services with potential new and current clients. Staff actually planning the annual Chamber Awards banquet, which was gonna be in February. Staff attended groundbreaking ceremony for the Ness and Carroll and Seacrest Animal Shelter, and staff coordinated Westeros Parks and Recreation grand opening on January the thirtieth. The committees, community engagement, they're striving, their, their goal is to strengthen areas, business, community, and chamber involvement through promotion and coordination of chamber services, events, and innovative projects within our community. Education and workforce committee will be working to increase community-wide involvement in support of all public schools, higher education opportunities, as well as projects and programs for business and professional development. Industry advisory committee will continue development of comprehensive chamber programs, services, and resources relevant to today's economic and industry needs, as well as chamber membership, awareness, and involvement. Policy advisory committee will maintain effective chamber bylaws, contracts, policies, and procedures to ensure the highest level of chamber professionalism, purpose, productivity, and pledge. Cretin County leadership will maintain robust leadership programs and projects which cultivate innovative leadership skills, workforce partnerships, and local community resources. Legislative council will collaborate with city, county, state, federal legislators as the chamber's liaison team to pursue legislation and policy that will positively affect our business community. The minutes for January were approved at the February meeting. Financials were approved as submitted. The, there were no new members in that month. There was one new member that, or one member that dropped. Let's see. Current member contacts was one thousand three hundred thirteen. Member recruitment contacts was four hundred and twenty-three. Total general members had grown to four twenty-nine. Seventy-three tourism packets were sent out, two ribbon cuttings, sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-six individuals reached on two platforms through the social media, five hundred and forty-four subscribers for the newsletter. Staff coordinated all membership services, financial reporting, and event scheduling. Director White coordinated marketing and communication services. She is also presenting a new membership plan and has a new program that she'd like to present in May. She'll start attending our meetings beginning in May. These first three or four months, she will need your feet on the ground. The membership class, excuse me, leadership class at twenty twenty-five slash twenty twenty-six is being coordinated. New member Emerald High Class, which is located in the Mid-Continent Building, Suite Sixteen, and then Groovy Greyhound Coffee and Creamery at eight oh six East Broadway, new members. The February minutes and financials were approved and submitted, or approved as submitted. Make It Real made a presentation, about a fifteen-minute presentation regarding Arkansas Learns Act and Five Concerns of Business Communities. They are working to solve and identify concerns. The students are working to develop their website that will, among other things, coordinate students with volunteer opportunities. It was a very interesting program. Current member contacts, one thousand five hundred and seventeen. Member recruitment, ninety-eight. New members, three. Total chamber members had grown to four thirty-one. Seventy-nine tourism packets mailed out, one ribbon cutting. Twenty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-four individuals reached across two platforms on social media. Weekly newsletter has grown subscribers, one thousand four hundred and ninety-eight. Let's see. Staff had visited five potential new members for that month. Staff is planning coordinated leadership class. They are planning and hosting the seventy-seventh annual awards banquet for the chamber. The Women in Business Roundtable is a new event that she really wants to speak with you on their meeting in April, but she will be here in May to discuss that in more detail. Working on the details for Dinner Theater, fundraiser for the chamber. New member Safety Equip, refinishing touch behavioral health and recovery, uplift coaching and consulting. And that concludes the report.
All right. We got two more reports. I'm gonna ask Main Street.
All right.
You're welcome, Councilman Mohammed.
Raymond, will you come up, please? Main Street?
Thank you, Council. First, we had a really great domino tournament this past weekend. We had nineteen people compete, and actually, one was from Memphis, one signed up with an address out of Louisiana, one from Hughes. But nineteen people competed, and I just wanted to include really some pictures to show you. We had a really great time, and several of the participants were asking if we could do this, actually, more than twice a year. They really liked the competition and the fellowship. But the first page is really just some pictures that highlight that event. You see, we had a, we gave away a thousand dollars for the first place. We gave away three, it was three hundred to second, one fifty to third, and fifty to fourth place. And then, on the second page, we've had a, you've probably seen a lot of the activity going on at the brand-new Broadway Food Park. The new mural is up, and it's gotten a lot of attention. That was done by artist Kirsten Sandlin, and she's actually gonna come back and do another mural for us. She's trying to iron out, in the bottom left-hand corner is a rough draft. It's, it's what's called a photo op mural, a selfie mural. It's where you can stand in front of it and have somebody take your picture. She's finalizing the final draft of that, but that's what she's come up with so far. And that will go on that, the two containers that are stacked up there. But if you haven't been by the new food truck park, you've gotta go by and see the transformation that's happened at that location. We've got alternative seating. That's the, the colorful tires that are, as soon as the weather clears up, those are gonna get a paint job and get freshened up. But we've also ordered five new picnic tables, conventional wooden picnic tables with umbrellas that will stick in them for shading as well. So we'll have the, the traditional seating there, too. But West Memphis fence came out and put up that fence for us to kinda, as a safety barrier. Y'all know Broadway is kinda fast, even though we've gotten the speed limit reduced. Cars still whiz by there, but that fence they put up for us, kinda to keep kids, you know, from running away and give parents a little bit of peace of mind. So they've always been good to us. Just wanna give them a little, little shout-out there. But there's some other information about how we wanna run the food truck park. We've got some rates that we've set for the day. That's still on that page. We've run those by the food trucks in the area, and they, they think those are great prices. They're very happy about those, and they're, I have them call me almost every day, when can I sign up? When, when's it gonna be ready? And we're thinking by the first of May, if not sooner. We're having a meeting right after this to talk about power. That's one of the last steps. We gotta get out there is utilities or at least power for these food trucks. We're also gonna get porta-potties and a wash station that will be serviced regularly out there. And we're hoping to have up to twelve spots. You'll see that at the bottom. And before I get too long, and feel free to stop me if you have any questions, but on the back is our next big event that's really already starting to blow up. It's the Food Truck Fest, that we had been planning for High Tower Park, but we're wanting to have it at the new food park now and do a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We feel like this is the time. It'll be about the right atmosphere to do it and maybe even draw more people. But we, we made one Facebook post about it, and I've had food trucks emailing and calling me from Memphis. We've had eleven or twelve sign up, and about five or six of them are from Memphis, which means they're, they're coming over here to the city clerk's office. They're getting a permit, and, you know, if they sign up for the festival, that permit is good for three hundred and sixty-five days, so they'll be more apt to come back and, and be regulars over here in Cretin County. But you can kinda see some of the trucks that have already signed up on the flyer, and we've got two bands. So May seventeenth, it's free to attend. We're gonna really start promoting it the way it works. The trucks have to offer something for five dollars. That way, people can come and sample as many true, as many food trucks as possible. But the trucks can still offer their, their full menu or a shortened menu, whatever they wanna do, but they must offer a five-dollar sampler item, so people can sample trucks. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, let's move to airport.
The airport met last Tuesday. It was a special-called meeting by the Chair, David Pike. The first thing we did was introduce the newest board member, which is Bill Morris. Basically, it was called to discuss the second phase of the North Apron Rehab Project. Construction is to begin on April the seventh. It was stated that all of the tenants on the north side that will be affected by this project have been contacted, and provisions are being made to accommodate them while the construction's going on. The commission members later met with the preconstruction, had a preconstruction meeting, and followed the commission meeting. And that, Mayor, concludes my report. All right, I just didn't have enough to say.
Okay. All right, I guess, were there? All right, I guess, were there any other committees overlooked?
Budget Committee did meet, we did not have a quorum, Ms. Perry is still working on the four amendments that we discussed two weeks ago, we should have those ready for you by the April 17th meeting.
All right, the last committee, I'm going to speak on this, right now, we're, as a city, in a area, in a region, we are experiencing generational storms, this is what meteorologists are labeling this storm that we're going through, it's a generational storm, so with that being said, West Memphis is going to flood, we're going to have some areas where it's going to flood, it's nothing that we're going to be able to do to prevent that, but I want to thank the men and women that has been involved with that, who is continuing to fight this storm right now, because last night, we was over at the NPO building upstairs, it's Command Center, and we looking at, by the grace of God, we didn't have any tornadoes to hit the people here in West Memphis, and I think that's major. I really want to say thank you to our OEMS Director, Dorian Rose, as well as Chief Ely in the Fire Department, Chief Campbell in the Police Department, Public Works Department, the Streets Department, the Sanitation Department and the Mechanics, our Utility Department and our NPO Departments. I mean, you know, they've done so many different things during this time, and they're still doing it in this weather, you look and see that the utility right now are working to make sure our pumps are up and during this storm, they are working, are manning the pumps to pump the water, to keep the water flowing, as well as our Public Works Department, when it comes down to the streets, they are working hard, if a tree or anything fall, they're going to move that, they've been dredging ditches previous before this storm took off. Our Sanitation Department along with the Streets Department and the Mechanics, they were filling up sandbags, we're making sure everyone who needed them got them, we deliver some to, whether you were seniors or individuals who was not able to get them, so we done all of that work. Our Fire Department, just yesterday, I don't know how it happened, I can't explain it better than the Chief, but some young lady was at the Taylor Rogers Park, and I don't know, I guess her car just kept going, and it went into the lake, you know, and they went in and made sure that there was no life lost or anything like that, now I think probably one of our records may have came and got the car, it was flooded, but they didn't lose any life, they, once again, the men and women stepped up and went and done what was necessary to make sure that person was okay. Our Police Department has always been our first line of defense when it comes down to crime, but not only that, there's our first line of defense to help the homelessness people that's in our community, you know. I actually talked to one guy, he sort of kind of argued at me because I'm trying to make sure he got a safe place to go, so I just kind of moved out because that's not, you know, my deal, we're trying to do that, I think they handled it better. Our Utilities Department made sure that it was no one, and you look at everything that was going on, no one lost power last night. So in our NPO, a guy was there to help us with maps and make sure that we know if something came, so at this point, I ask Director Rose, will you come up since you was sort of leading this whole ship and just kind of speak on what our plans was last night and why our plans are continuing to be, because we are not out of this.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and City Council, I really don't have a lot to add to what the Mayor said, he kind of, you know, corralled everything, I'll answer any questions, but I will say that we are in a state of emergency, and we will be, probably through Monday morning, and the Mayor used the term generational a while ago, and they're also using the term catastrophic, you know, and when we start hearing those two terms used as much as these weather professionals are using, you know, it really makes you perk up, you really got to get your attention span setting and really zoning and take heed to these warnings that they're giving out, because the last data that I saw is we could see upwards of 13 and a half inches of rainwater, you know, and that's going to overwhelm anybody, I don't care if you're in West Memphis, Memphis, Dallas, Miami, wherever, you know, so, you know, and I can't even tell you how fortunate we are, and I hate that Ward stepped out, because, you know, y'all remember the 1987 incident of the flood and the tornado and the snow, and that was the culprit, that design, you know, that caused the designings of the system that we're using today, and Ward designed it, you know, so I mean, Ward built the system that we've been using for almost the last 40 years, so who better to have on your staff and to tell you what the problems are in your city than the man who actually designed it himself? So, you know, being able to move that water and get it through those ditches, it's imperative for us, you know, but with that being said, it does not matter how robust your flood pumping system is, whenever you get six, eight inches of water over a short amount of time, there's nowhere for that water to go, you know, we just have to wait till the rain stops, and then we will start to see it recede and we can get back to normal. And I think that's exactly why the Mayor was so instrumental in getting these sandbags out to our citizens and getting that message broadcast out to people, because we know what our problems are, we know where we're vulnerable, so we've had three or four days warning ahead of time to know that we've used that generational term, we've used that catastrophic term, we know we're about to be impacted, so go ahead and let's prepare now with the tools that we have, just to lessen, you know, the impact that we're going to see. But kudos to the Mayor, we stood up a Level 2 EOC yesterday at 3:00 PM and it ran through about 11:00 PM, and if you've watched the radar last night, which I'm sure the majority of you did, there was a lot of places in Arkansas impacted, you know, north of us, south of us, west of us, knock on wood, you know, we're in a great spot here, you know, we're, it really, it really just kind of took a trajectory around us on both ends, and very fortunate last night because the potential was there. That five out of five warning, I know you get my emails and my text messages, we saw that five out of five warning the last time on March 31st of '23, when the tornado hit Little Rock and wind, so we know what those damages look like, history already told us what those five out of five warnings look like, and we were prepared, and, you know, really proud of our team, we had law enforcement, fire services, utility, the Mayor's Administration, communications, everybody was in the EOC, and everybody was working, you know, and it was a good time, it really was. And I'll answer any questions if you have any, if you have any concerns. Yes, sir, please.
The system has, the implementation was a godsend, be first to agree, I've lived here for 65 years now. We all understand street flooding, we know how aggravating that can be, we have managed to get a lot of houses out of the flood zone with this project and all the improvements administrations have made, but the one thing that just drives the stake in people's heart is where we still have the pockets of street flooding and it's entering their homes, and the streets aren't barricaded, and somebody comes to Yahoo down through there in a big truck and just waves going in their houses. If there's something we can do to barricade those streets, those people would thank you.
Yes, sir, and if we can get those informations, if we can call it into either the radio room or City Hall, you can call my office, I don't care, text me the information and I'll get on it, and I'll tell you exactly, that's funny that you bring that up, because I was listening to the radio a while ago when the Marion Police Chief told his police officers on the radio, if a four-wheel-drive vehicle comes through these flood zones and splashes water into a house, I want them arrested. So, you know, that was a very stern message that he's sending out to his people, and I know our Police Chief will reciprocate and do the same.
Well, I know they would consider it a blessing, because they, it just really, they just go to tears.
That's right, and I can imagine, so yes, please, let's get that information in, and I will give a huge shout-out to our Police Department, as you all know, they're on the street 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so during these emergency operations, they compile a report to me every 12 hours indicating house fires, power lines down, street floods, you know, whatever, you know, the whole nine yards, anything that they come into contact with, so whenever we get those reports on that 12th hour, we will be able to see where we're impacted at, where we need to put our personnel, but if you know of people who are impacted right now, let's go ahead and get that information sent in, so we can get our people over there and get them squared away, get those streets shut down. I know we've already shut down Rich Road at Arlington in that area, I've heard the Police Department giving a few other reports throughout the city, we got a message earlier that the Marion School District went ahead and closed the old Avondale VPA early because there's some flooding over in the Dover, Cressmere area, so I know our people are on it, so let's get, if you have that information, let's get it pushed down.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I appreciate that, and also, I also want to give kudos to Nick Coulter and Ms. Lauren, because the communication part is so important, you know, many people, I watch Facebook and it was like, well, why don't we know, but you came up with a great plan that the Council approved, the 91896, if you live in West Memphis, you need to chime in and get your phone activated to that number, so you can get every minute, split minute, every information that we have to get out to you. If you're not going to do that, once again, if you follow our Facebook, Twitter pages, you will see that if it's coming from the utility side, Ms. Lauren have that, if it's coming from the city side, Nick Coulter is going to have all that. Just some tips, I guess they say, make sure you keep your phone charged up, keep your flashlights and stuff available, and call and check on your loved ones, I mean, just make sure everything going and, you know, in case a light outage do happen, your phone is charged up enough where you can be able to use that as possible, so it's just those things like that. Like I said, right now, this is pouring down right now, if you keep raining like this, there's no way we can stop. I watched one young lady, and that's why I want to point, I'm just going to, I'm not going to harp on this, but that's why it was so important for this tax, for the infrastructure to be passed, so now we can start working on our values and what Ward is getting done, because I know, Councilman Kent, you understand, some of the others may understand, but starting at December 17, you have to start back in order to get the water where it need to be and get that cleared up. If the levee district ever start to widen this bio by 40 feet wide and 40 feet deep, that means that the bios can hold more capacity of water, so all of this plays a part when we trying to make sure West Memphis not flood to where it floods, but this is why we working, so I just want to say thank you to you and all the men and all the women that work for our city, who put their lives on the line, because like I said, this thing is not over, right now we getting ready to possibly deal with flooding, and they said if another car go off in the bio, the Fire Department will be out there jumping in the water, you know, trying to save them or anything may happen, so if you without power, utility be out there dealing with the line, so I just want to commend everyone for the job that we are currently done and currently going to continue doing, and then we can get our city out of this storm.
Well, thank you to you too, because, you know, the Mayor was in the EOC all night with us last night, you know, with all the senior leadership personnel, so very appreciative of your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwayne, are sandbags still available?
I believe they are, yes, sir, and there's two locations, the West Memphis City Shop has the location, and we have personnel over there getting them all squared away, and they had another location out in Marion, out at the Marion Sports Complex, they were allowing sandbag, you know, pick up over that too, but please, yes, come by there and get them, obviously, today, you know, it's pouring down rain out there right now, they have a good makeshift cover over there at the shop where they've got it under a canopy and they're able to work out of the elements, but, you know, it's kind of nasty outside, you know, so I mean, you know, just keep that in mind, but, yes, we will continuously operate the sandbag operation throughout this flooding event.
The next thing is, goes back to what Councilman Kent said, when people drive through the flooded area, okay, do you have, or does the city have enough block?
Barricades.
Barricades to block the street on both ends, because I saw one's blocked on one end and, you know.
We will, I will make contact with Mr. Odell Slaughter after this council meeting, but yes, and if we do not have the material, we can borrow it, you know, the State, the Highway Department, they are a real good partner of ours, the county's got access to materials, Marion has access to it, so, you know, as a collaborative effort right now, we can get those barricades in place if we don't have that asset, but I'm pretty sure we do.
Well, I know that each council member and their wards, as Councilor, I mean, Monday and I were just speaking about earlier, we know where the areas are that need to be watched.
That's right.
So, I just wanted to make sure that...
Feel free to text me, you know, if you hear about an area, you know, call me or shoot me a text, and we'll get it relayed. During this emergency, our senior leadership team is going to have a brief every afternoon at 3:00 PM, at least through Monday, you know, if the operation continues after Monday, we will continue, but we will brief every afternoon at 3:00 PM to make sure that we are being accountable for everything, because in a state of emergency right now, you know, County Judge Willis has issued an emergency declaration for the county, so we are making sure that we are, you know, keeping up with all of our expenses, all of our information, so, you know, we can measure up to that monetary threshold that the declaration requires.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Also, a few quick things, also, you know, I met with Senator Cotton, I met with Senator Boozman, and Congressman Crawford, Representative, once I was in Washington, then they came back here to City Hall, and we met here, and definitely just trying to talk with them about some of the things that we need, I know earmarks are not good words, but any way that we can get some, I guess, some favor on some possibilities, some grants, you know, to help get our South Loop completed, because it's going to be major, some more power things that we need to get down on the north side of the city, and possibly Slack Water Harbor, you know, you're going to have, and they're going to ask for it all, so, you know, definitely, we had that conversation, it's going good, so definitely, I think they understand the possibilities of West Memphis, and I think they're excited about it, so I'm just hoping that, hopefully with all the money being saved, I guess, some of it could come our way, if possible. Also, our element shelter is moving pretty well, they are in contact on that as well. Then, the Ridgell Bridge, this Tuesday, the concrete slabs will be here, and hopefully we can go get that knocked out, like I said, by the end of April, we'll be doing, we're going to do a ribbon cutting on that.
I thought you were still wanting it named after you now.
Actually, I want to call it the Golden Gate Bridge, but I mean, hey, since we're going to change the Mississippi River to the West Memphis River, so I mean, I might as well throw that in as well.
Well, you know that the residents in Ward 3 and Ward 1 were constantly getting messages, they quit working on the Rich Road Bridge, and I said, would say, no, they were there to put the gas line, relocate the gas line, they're done now, so you got to go to Phase 2, so I'm glad you mentioned that, so I don't have to...
And they understand that, we could be working this week, but guess why, we can't work this week? Tell them to go open their windows up and just look and see what's coming from the sky, so I mean, it's coming, we've waited this long and now we got it, hopefully they'll be all right. But yeah, this Tuesday, those concrete slabs will be in, so we start to move forward there. I have some presentations I need to give out, first, I don't know what the coach down there is doing, I mean, not only has he just went back-to-back, he went back-to-back-to-back, you know, and West Memphis Christian Coach Bandit is doing an outstanding job, and these young gentlemen right here, I mean, I want to know who to hold, you know, Councilman Kent going to hold is the highest score, Councilman, hold, you can get the center, Councilman Willis, you can get the forward, so I mean, hey, I want to first of all congratulate these young men on once again winning another state championship. And first, I want to honor this young man, because he is awarded with great honor and distinction to celebrate the extraordinary achievement of securing three consecutive state championships, this historic feat is unprecedented in over 40 years, as the Knights have claimed both the 2023 and 2024 M A I S 3A Boys Basketball State Championship, while their coach earned well-deserved title of Coach of the Year. As Mayor, I stand a heartfelt congratulations on your remarkable success and wish you continued excellence as you continue the West Memphis winning streak in both sports and academics. At this time, I'm going to introduce the Coach of the Year, Mr. Coach Bandit. And he can't do it without some help, because he have Coach Tim Bates and Coach Darren Savvy, if they're here, they can come up.
Good afternoon, everybody. Certainly, we are appreciative...
Certainly, we are appreciative of the recognition for some of the excellence that we've been able to accomplish these young men. Let's give them a hand again. Obviously, you can't be a Coach of the Year without having a great team, so I appreciate my team. Now, obviously, this is, our circumstances today are, I wouldn't call them heavy, but they're not necessarily all happy and go-lucky, because we're dealing with some real-life issues, and we recognize that, so with that being in mind, we just appreciate being on the, on the itinerary today. Obviously, when I think of the term winning streak, a streak means something that continues to go on, so we plan to continue our success, we plan to continue to have the support of the city, our community, we're just thankful today, so we appreciate you all.
So, you all know that the coach just promised us another championship, right? So, you gotta go back-to-back-to-back-to-back, and I know he's gonna do that, because who's gonna come up here and help him, is Mr. Cameron Lewis. Come on, come around. Mr. Stefan Schiffer. Mr. Tim Bates III. Keaton, Keaton Ronhouse, but he's not, he's not here. Darren Sevvy. Dakota Roland. And Mr. Dale Levy. And all of these read the same word, says is awarded the certificate and honor and distinction for the outstanding accomplishment of winning the twenty-twenty-five M.A.I.S. three A Boys Basketball State Championship. As Mayor and Council, we congratulate you on continuing the West Memphis winning streak in both sports and, most importantly, academics. Thank you. We also have a proclamation here for the city that I'm gonna ask Mr. Chad Bowman, will he come and deliver for us? It's the first housing proclamation that we do every year, and some of his department has definitely been working hard on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of West Memphis Proclamation, on behalf of the Honorable Mayor Marco McLendon, whereas April twentieth marks the fifty-seventh anniversary of the enactment of Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, this landmark legislation was amended in nineteen eighty-eight by the Fair Housing Amendments Act, which expanded the coverage of Title Eight of the nineteen sixty-eight Act. Title Eight of the nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen eighty-eight Acts, generally referred to as the Federal Fair Housing Act, made it the nation's policy to assure that fair housing becomes a reality throughout the United States by prohibiting discrimination in the sale, rental, or financing of housing on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or natural origin. Consequently, it is altogether fitting that we mark April twenty-twenty-five as a time for rededication to the spirit and purpose of the national goal of fair housing, for all and the renewal of the commitment as citizens to make the promise of fair housing a reality for all Americans, whereas a nation, we have come a long way over these fifty-seven years in meeting the national commitment, whereas it becomes a responsibility of every American to make their personal commitment to ensure that all persons are afforded an equal opportunity to obtain housing. When each and every American makes their personal commitment to justice and fairness, discrimination will no longer exist, whereas I am deeply committed to the goal of fair housing and equal housing opportunity for all Americans. Further, I am firmly convinced that the overwhelming majority of all Americans are similarly committed. Accordingly, we must now join together and translate our commitment into clear living reality by reaffirming our individual commitments and ensuring that fair housing practices and equal opportunity in housing do exist in all of our neighborhoods across this great land. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Honorable Mayor Marco McLendon, Mayor, do hereby proclaim this month of April twenty-twenty-five to be Fair Housing Month, and invite all my fellow citizens to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Thank you.
All right, I had no more announcements, I had no citizen requests. Do any council person have anything they don't want to add? Well, you know, the one that can't meet a few minutes after this meeting, are we still meeting?
Again, and, and I speak for one, but staff, thank you. You worked tirelessly with this weather, and we can never thank you enough for what you've done, boys.
Thank you. All right, well, can I get a motion, a second to adjourn?
Salute.
Second. On the paper, I oppose, we adjourn.